Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, March 20th. It's 2:00. Um, it is our Seattle City Council briefing meeting. I will now call it to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Morales. Thank you. Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Muscata.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Sawan. Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Sawan. Council President Juarez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. We can swing back when Councilmember Sawan, because I know I saw her tile up there, so I know she's here somewhere.
Right.
Okay, so moving along, if there's no objection, the minutes of March 13th will be adopted. Not seeing any objection, the minutes of March 13th are adopted. Moving on to the President's report on today's agenda, we will again welcome our OIR Director, Director Tarleton, um, and staff to give us an update of what's going on in Olympia, their weekly presentations on the legislative session, which I understand is the, um, well, will, um, will be the end of April. Yeah, okay. Following the state legislative update, we will have a presentation on the property tax levy by central staff, Ally Pinucci. Will be joined by Eden Sissick. Eden, I hope I said your name right, and Tom Mescal, Mical, I'm sorry, Mike Cell. Probably said that wrong, too. How about I just say Eden and Tom? Uh, we have a proclamation as well to sign today. It's a proclamation celebrating the Iranian New Year or Day, no ruse. Councilmember Herbal will be speaking to that proclamation. You should all have received a copy of that, I think, last week. Following the proclamation, we will then have individual reports by each council member, and today we will start with Councilmember Lewis. Um, on tomorrow's agenda, the consent calendar will include the minutes and payment of the bills. We will take one vote, as you all know, and if one of you want to remove one of the items, do you would remove it and vote on it further on into the agenda. There are two items under committee reports on the agenda tomorrow. The first is Council Bill 12529, clarifying the structure for the charter position of Director Finance. Councilor Muscata will speak to this as she is the sponsor. This item was recommended by the Finance and Housing Committee. Item number two is Resolution 32088, approving an MOA, a memorandum of agreement with University of Washington Medical Center Northwest Campus regarding establishing a Development Advisory Committee for the preparation of the Northwest Campus Master Plan. Councilmember Morales is a sponsor and will be speaking to that item as well. This item was recommended by the Neighborhood, Education, Civil Rights and Culture Committee. Information on all these items on tomorrow's agenda, of course, is always available online. Please note that we will be canceling Monday, March 27th, council briefing, and the next council briefing will be 2:00 on Monday, April 3rd. All right. So with that, we are going to slide into our state legislative session update, and I'm going to hand it over to Director Tarleton.
Uh, thank you, Council President Juarez and members of the council. Uh, I'm here today with my State Relations Director, Samir Janajo, and State Relations, State Legislative Liaison, Anna Johnson, for our weekly update, and, uh, today begins a very fast and, uh, full remainder of the legislative session. Uh, make sure Anna and Samir have a chance to share some of the highlights that have been happening, uh, last week, and, uh, then today, the, uh, State Senate released its, uh, version of the capital budget from the Capital Budget Vice Chair of Ways and Means, and so, uh, we'll have a lot happening this week and next week, uh, regarding hearings and votes out of committee and votes off the floor of the House for various bills related to the budgets. So I'm gonna let Anna Johnson first fill you in on some of the key pieces of policy that continue to move through the legislative process. So Anna, why don't you, uh, take it away?
Yeah, hey, good afternoon, everyone. Anna Johnson, State Legislative Liaison for OIR. Um, as Gail mentioned, uh, the Senate released their capital budget today, and over the next two weeks, we'll see a total of six budgets released, um, one capital operating and transportation budget for each chamber. Um, this afternoon, we're also expecting a new state revenue forecast, um, that will help um, prepare the budgets to be released, um, based on an updated revenue forecast. So that's the plan for the next, um, two weeks. Also, I want to remind you that, um, we are anticipating the next cutoff, which is Wednesday of next week, which is opposite housed policy cutoff. Um, and so right now, we're just in the thick of policy hearings and executive sessions of the bills in, from the opposite chamber. Um, and so that's where we're at amidst the legislative session. Um, so I'm gonna start with the bill updates and the budget and revenue. Um, one bill that I haven't had a chance to share with you all yet, um, is House Bill 1355. This bill was heard in the Senate Ways and Means Committee last week. Um, this bill's from Representative Wiley. This bill updates the property tax exemption for service-connected disabled veterans and senior citizens. It expands eligibility, um, by increasing the income thresholds, and it also adjusts the, um, threshold check-in to every three years instead of five years. This bill passed the House unanimously and is now moving through the Senate. And a bill in the climate and environmental space that I want to update you on is House Bill 1181 from Representative Duer. This bill had a hearing last week in the Senate Committee on Local Government, Land Use and Tribal Affairs. Um, this bill adds a climate change and resilience, resiliency element to the list of elements that must be included in comprehensive plans, um, under the GMA. This bill moved out of the Policy Committee late last week as well, and it now is scheduled for a hearing in Ways and Means this week.
Good afternoon, everybody. Samir Janajo, State Relations Director with OIR. Um, and I'll move on to, um, a behavioral health bill that we've been watching at OIR. This is around regarding crisis relief centers, your 23-hour crisis centers. Uh, Senate Bill 5120 sponsored by Senator Dingra. It was still moving, and it was heard last week in the House Healthcare Committee and is scheduled for a vote out of committee this Wednesday. Um, on a few, there's a few lot, many housing bills are still continuing to move. One is, was heard last weekend, is scheduled for action later this week, is related to lot splitting. This is House Bill 1245. This bill requires cities to allow for the splitting of residential lots under certain conditions. Uh, so this bill moved out of the House, it is now in the Senate, and is scheduled for a vote out of the Senate, uh, Housing Committee this, uh, week. A tenant bill that is continuing to move is House Bill 1074. Uh, this is related to tenant deposits and damages. It was heard last week as well and scheduled for a vote out of the committee this week. Uh, this bill requires a landlord to substantiate the cost of any damages withheld from a tenant deposit with repair estimates, invoices, or other documentation. It also extends a timeline for landlord to provide a statement and documentation for retaining the, any portion of a deposit from 21 days to 30 days. It also prohibits a landlord from withholding any portion of a tenant deposit for certain items. Um, the larger land use density bills are continuing to move as well. Senate Bill 5466 related to transit-oriented development and House Bill 1110 related to middle housing. Both had hearings last week, uh, and both are scheduled for executive action this week. Uh, and then, and then another, um, priority housing bill is House Bill 1474 related to covenant homeownership program, uh, that I've also talked about in previous weeks, and that also has continued to move and had a hearing in the Senate last Friday. Uh, and moving to cannabis bills, Senate Bill 5080, Social Equity in Cannabis, that bill had a hearing in the House last week and is also scheduled for executive session this upcoming week. Uh, as a reminder, it expands the state's social equity in cannabis program by expanding retail licenses that are available and also adding just processor and producer licenses. Um, one of the changes that was made during the process was, it was, the bill was amended to allow a process for local governments to object to the LCB granting any license under this bill.
All right, moving on to the public safety section of your council bulletin. Um, last week, the Senate Human Services, um, Committee heard House Bill 1470 from Representative Ortiz Self. This concerns private detention facilities. It requires Department of Health to adopt rules and standards for sanitary, hygienic, and safe living conditions for individuals detained at private detention facilities. It creates a private right of action and civil penalties that would be enforced by the AG's office, um, to recover civil penalties. It's scheduled for executive session this week. There's a couple of bills that were heard in the Senate Law and Justice Committee last week that support victims. First, House Bill 1025 from Representative Orwell. This Orwell, this supports, um, crime victims and witnesses by promoting, um, a victim, victim-centered, trauma-informed responses in the legal system. Um, a second bill is House Bill 1715 from Representative Davis. This is, uh, comprehensive protections for victims of domestic violence and other violence, um, including family members and intimate partners. Both of these bills received bipartisan support in the House, um, and they're both scheduled for executive session this week. And then, uh, last, uh, section is the social programs and education. I've mentioned in previous briefings that, um, it's a priority of the legislature to increase access to childcare through the Working Connections Childcare Program. There's a couple of bills that are intending to do that. On Monday, the Senate Early Learning and K-12 Committee heard, um, House Bill 1525 from Representative Fossey. This expands the Working Connections Childcare eligibility to those who are in 12 months, first 12 months of a state-registered apprenticeship program. Um, also on another, uh, bill related to working connections childcare is Senate Bill, um, 5225 from Senator Wilson. This bill had a hearing on Friday. This one expands eligibility to include those who work in childcare, and it also prohibits DCYF from considering the immigration status of an applicant. Both of these bills are bipartisan and were exact out of their committees late, late last week. And that is it for our briefing today. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, let's see. Are there any questions for my colleagues regarding for, um, Director Tarleton and team? All right. I do not see any questions. I guess we're all okay until we find out what's going on next week. Right?
Uh, and Council President, you aren't having a working session next Monday, you had mentioned. So we are happy to, uh, talk offline with anybody as, um, House of Origin cutoff of the opposite chamber happens. Uh, March 29th, we'll be seeing over the next few days the bills that are getting heard and the bills getting, uh, executive, you know, voted out of committee. So, uh, happy to keep you all informed individually, uh, since we won't have the briefing next Monday.
Great. Um, is there anything else for my colleagues before we say goodbye to Gail and her team? All right, not seeing any. Thank you, Director Tarleton. Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Samira. Okay, folks, moving on into our agenda, uh, we are gonna have the, an overview, a property tax levy overview, and central staff will provide this overview, and I believe Ally will be, um, you should have all got an advanced copy of the 21-page PowerPoint and the, uh, five-page memo, Property Tax Revenues and Debt Capacity Memo, five pages, which was riveting, if you didn't have a chance to read it. So at this time, I'm gonna just hand it over to Ally and team and let them walk us through this. Uh, are you just gonna go through the PowerPoint, Ally? Subject you can, or are you gonna put it up?
Yep, I'm gonna put it up on the screen.
Okay, well, then the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, council members. I'm Ally Pinucci of your Council Central Staff, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Ed and Sissick and Tom Mike Cell, um, who I will be turning most of the presentation over to in just a moment, but as the Council President teed up for us, um, we distributed a memo and, uh, PowerPoint, and that is also posted to the agenda for the public's viewing. I'll just flag that, uh, there's a typo at the top of the memo. It was drafted in 2023, not 2022, so so note, this is our current, um, memo on property taxes, and we're excited that the Council President is so enthusiastic about this presentation. There is a lot of material to cover today in about 30 minutes, and so we'll do a high-level walkthrough of the presentation, but we're also happy to meet with you individually to go into more detail, um, as needed. Um, so I'm just gonna provide a quick introduction, and then I'll turn it over. Um, we prepared these materials in response to questions from council offices during deliberations last summer on the renewal of the Park District Levy. The presentation is really focused to get, help us all have a shared understanding of how property taxes are calculated and how individual proposals to renew a voter-approved levy fits within the context of all the various levies. The scenarios we've provided in the latter part of the presentation, which Tom will cover, are for illustrative purposes and don't reflect any specific proposal on future voter-approved levy renewal rules. The scenarios were developed using a model that the City Budget Office developed, and then central staff adjusted for discussion along with input from the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast. So moving forward, central staff, we will use this model to analyze and inform future decisions around levy renewals, including council's upcoming deliberations on the city's housing levy. And just a quick thank you to Director Dingly, um, from the City Budget Office, and Director Noble from the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast for providing, um, technical support and analytical support as we develop these materials. And with that, I'm going to share my screen and turn it over to Ed in to kick things off.
So before we begin, I'm gonna ask Mike, well, what would you prefer? I, I would, I would ask my colleagues if you can hold off on questions, but if people have a burning desire to ask a question, but my preference is, is we let these guys get through this overview. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you to Director, or Deputy Director Pinucci for that riveting intro. Uh, good afternoon, council members. Uh, my name is Edens Sisich, uh, with Council Central Staff. And for this presentation, I will provide a brief overview of property taxes, how they're calculated, um, using one of our levies as an example, um, followed by some breakdowns of the overall in the city's property tax portions, along with other, um, related comparison charts, um, including how we compare to our neighbor cities, and then Tom will go into future levy scenarios and decisions that lie ahead. Um, so by the end of this presentation, and also a memo that we just mentioned that we circulated prior to the briefing, um, we're hoping that the audience will gain three key takeaways. Um, they'll understand the difference between general property tax levy and voter-approved levy lifts, um, understand the impacts of these levies to property owners and renters, and lastly, what decisions lie ahead, um, and how each individual decision impacts future options. So with that, let's get started with Slide 1, um, of the overview. Um, there are three different types of property taxes that combine to create the city's overall rate. Uh, we have the general purpose levy, which is not subject to voter approval, but is dependent on council budget action during the budget process. And this levy generates about one-fifth of the overall general fund revenue. Um, though the growth of this levy is limited to 1% plus the, um, value of new constructions, which ranges between 0.5 and 2% typically. Um, voter-approved levies for specific purposes, um, known as levy-lived lifts, uh, because voters authorize taxation above the statutory limits, um, which constrains the general purpose levy. Um, we currently have five of those, and we'll cover the details later in the presentation, but those include the Move Seattle Levy, uh, low-income housing, families and education, election vouchers, and libraries for all. And lastly, uh, levies to pay debt service and voter-approved bonds, like the Alasman Way C-Val bond, um, and they're called excess levies because they don't count against the city's rate limit, and, um, they also require a 60% supermajority vote. Next slide, please. So this is the, so, um, how are property tax rates and property tax bills calculated? Um, first off, it's important to understand that property tax rates are expressed in units of 1,000 of assessed value. Um, so in this slide and the slides to follow, um, you'll see assessed value AV, um, are, they're being divided by 1,000. Um, and this is just to conform with the standard way that, um, property tax rates are discussed. So the first part of this slide, um, it calculates the levy rate, levy tax rate, and that's simply done by taking the annual levy, uh, annual amount that the levy is authorized to collect and dividing it by the total assessed value of all property in the city. Um, and then after determining the tax rate, calculating the tax amount for an individual property is done by multiplying that tax rate by the assessed value of that property. Um, and in the next slide, um, yeah, I'll provide a specific example and, um, using the Move Seattle Levy and a 2022 median assessed home value, so we can put the formulas that we just signed a previous slide in, into context. Um, so here, um, the $100 million at the top represents the 2022 uh, revenue collection amount, um, for the Move Seattle Levy, um, and dividing that by the $275 billion figure, which represents the total assessed value of all Seattle's property, per 1,000 AV, um, for a tax rate of 37 cents in this case. And so, um, at the, the next portion, um, for an individual property tax amount, um, we take that 37 cents tax rate and multiply by the property's assessed value, um, the 760K, which is the 2022 median assessed home value, um, and the median tax amount in 2022 for the Move Seattle Levy was $278.50. Um, and this is the largest of the five voter-approved levies, actually. Um, now the calculations for all the various levies are done in a similar way, and then all of them combined make up the total property tax bill uh, for a property. And so this chart shows, um, the different jurisdictions, um, whose rates make up the total property tax rate imposed on Seattle property owners. Um, as you can see, uh, for a median assessed home value, um, up to 760K, uh, the total tax bill was just over $6,700. And the city makes up about a quarter of that amount, uh, with the state school fund and school district, um, accounting for just over half of the total amount. Um, and then the, the next slide, um, further breaks down the city's portion, um, of that $6,700 median assessed home value property tax bill, and, um, the largest portion of the city's property tax is the general purpose levy, which makes up over half, uh, just about 54% of the total, um, followed by the voter-approved Move Seattle Transportation Levy, which is about one-fifth or 18% of the total, and that's the example we just used a minute ago. Um, so the city's rate for 2022 is $2.37 per $1,000 assessed value, and that includes the Metropolitan Park District, MPD's, um, 2022 rate of 20 cents. And I will turn it over to Tom to discuss the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Edin. Um, good afternoon, um, members of the City Council, Tom Mike Cell with your central staff. So, um, what, the next two slides, I'm gonna cover and then turn back over to Edin, but these slides are something that we have, um, created, um, as a kind of a new concept for this type of presentation, and this is with respect to rental housing. Um, recent reports have indicated that actually more than 50% of Seattle residents, in fact, live in rental housing. So having a perspective of how property taxes, um, play into rent, our typical rent, um, is, is an important consideration. Um, the, the trouble is that there is not a, a really, um, great metric for what a median rent is, um, or what are we, particularly with regards to the median, um, assessed value, which is what's used for property taxes. So, um, to kind of tackle this, um, challenge, uh, we have worked with the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast, um, who has, um, helped us estimate the value of a typical rental property in the city of Seattle. Um, and the primary way that was done was looking at Zillow values for median rent. Um, the, uh, the value of that median rent is approximately $2,195 as of January 1st of this year. And then working from that value, um, the Forecast Office applied some, uh, some rules of thumb about, uh, the, uh, cap rates and management fees and various considerations that are included in determining rent um, to calculate, to back calculate what the, um, associated assessed value would be for that rental unit. And I just wanna, wanna, um, caveat this, because there is, really is no one side that's all for, for rental housing. There are a number of, um, red, different types of rental properties that vary in terms of age and the number of units. Um, and furthermore, the financial characteristics of the rental of the, um, of the property itself may vary, whether or not there is financing involved or fully, fully, um, owned by the, by the landowner. Um, so, so there, you know, that, those are kind of some grains of salt to keep in mind when considering these numbers, but, um, but we, we do the best that we can and to provide a little bit of additional information into discussion. So all that being said, um, as you see on this slide, if we, um, use, approximate the, uh, the Zillow rent of $2,100 or about $2,200, um, that calculate that to be an assessed value of $350,000, that equates to a total annual property tax bill of about $3,100. Um, and this is for all, all tax and jurisdiction. This is a, an annual, um, property tax bill. And then that compares to the annual rent of about $2,200. Um, it's about, on a monthly basis, about 15% of the rent. And so it's important to note that, um, whether or not the rent is 100% passed through to the, um, to the renter, um, is, is unknown. I mean, that again is determined by the, the financial characteristics of that, of that specific, um, financing relationship. But this, this gives some sense of how much, uh, property taxes on all jurisdiction basis, um, factors in or compares to the, the monthly rent. And if we look at the next slide, please, this is the similar calculation for just the city taxes. So this, these are essentially duplicates of the, of the two slides prior that Edin showed for the median assessed value. Um, and this, it's, it's similar, similar proportion for the, um, for the rent property, uh, calculation for tax bill, $830 for, for the full year, which is about 3% compared to the, um, to the annual rent. So on a monthly basis, the comparison would be the same. It's about 3% of the, of the rent. Um, so again, um, these are just some, some, uh, rough calculations that we've been made. We will, if, if there's an opportunity to enhance them as we move along, um, in the discussions, we will do so. But for now, hopefully this provides a little bit of insight into, um, um, how property taxes impact the, the housing costs, um, for half of the residents of Seattle. And I'll turn it over back to Edin, um, for, to wrap up, uh, the first part of the presentation before going into scenarios.
Thanks, Tom. Um, so this slide is related to exemptions. Um, Washington State offers four property tax exemptions or deferral programs for primary residences. Um, so this table just shows some of the basic eligibility requirements, um, and information for, and qualifying the income levels for the available programs, and, um, the Washington State Department of Revenue website would be the place to go um, for those interested in learning more. Um, but just to provide a tiny little bit of detail on one of the programs, um, the first program in the table provides a tax exemptions for qualifying seniors and disabled persons. Um, and this program allows the value of a residence to be frozen, um, for property tax purposes, and the owner becomes exempt from all excess levies and possible, possibly regular levies as well. Um, and this accommodation results in an overall reduction in property taxes. Um, and then one other interesting fact I read on the King County Assessor's, uh, website is that while these, these benefit programs, uh, for senior citizens and disabled that provided, more than 26,000 qualified seniors, um, and disabled persons have yet to register for, for the exemption. So only one, about one in 100 of those eligible, um, for deferrals are currently enrolled. So on the next slide, related to this, um, kind of did similar charts that we, uh, saw earlier, uh, but these are for seniors. So based on information from the, yeah, those previous couple of slides, I dug into data, data just to see what the average senior tax bill is and how it's broken out. Um, though I found limited data on the Assessor's Office, um, website, come, it combines state, county, and port into one group. Um, but you can see that for a median, um, home, a senior tax bill is almost $3,000 less or about 42% less than what we saw in the, in the previous chart. And for this slide, uh, we also thought it might be helpful to provide some historical context of, of, in terms of how the median assessed value and the total property, uh, tax bill have changed over the last several, several years. Um, you'll notice that the property tax amount is generally correlated with With assessed value except in twenty nineteen. Where total property tax amount decreased while the median assessed value increased. And that's because of the state legislature levy swap plan to to fund K twelve education. So twenty 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 two is also a great example of the point we alluded to earlier. That voter approved levies and not the property, not the rising property values are the main drivers of property tax increases. As you can see in the chart, the the increase in that in the total amount of property taxes to be collected. In King County was modest for the twenty twenty two tax year about three percent, despite the fact that. The property value throws by about nine percent. So that covers that portion. I'll turn it back over to Tom to go into some scenarios for you guys.
Thank you, Ed. So the the next, the pretty much the remainder of this slide and the presentation will talk about. Financial planning scenarios around the upcoming levy renewals. What we have here is the. Table that shows. All of the upcoming levy renewals for not just the city, but also other jurisdictions. In the context of the the calendar of dates from starting with this year through the 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 next renewal of the Metropolitan Park District in twenty twenty eight. The city levies are highlighted in green, then the school and county levies, which are also included in the scenario model for purposes of. Showing the 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 context for all the full tax bill are included as well. But this is just to show kind of what the current amounts are of the duration in years and and the the sequencing of the different date. That are included in the in the. The model that we that's been built to describe the growth and levies and kind of form the context for the upcoming decision. If we could look at the next slide. We'll just kind of cover just some of the kind of high level consideration that are contemplated in the modeling. First is that the total city rate. So this is the. That the rate covering covering our general purpose levy and any lid lift. It would not include the Metropolitan Park District because that is a different tax and jurisdiction, and then it would not include. The excess tax levy for debt. Neither of those are are included within the cap, but everything else is. Capped at a total city rate of three dollars and sixty cents per a thousand dollars of assessed value. And that's important, as you'll see later on in the slide, because it shows kind of the upper limit of the taxation capacity for the city. And the kind of the sequencing matters because decisions that are made earlier in the order. Can can serve to crowd out taxpayer appetite to to consider larger lifts for different purposes. In in future discussion. So that's why we do this kind of financial planning scenario is to show how. How the decisions back upon which other upon each other because they all tax against the same tax base of assessed value in the city. And they all, at least for the from the city's perspective, are within that three dollar and sixty cent total cap. And again, just to reiterate, we're we're talking about all of this city that lifts, not just the low income housing levy, but the transportation levy and. And all the other ones that we currently have. Furthermore, we're including the county lid lifts, the school district levies. And then also the the county, the new county behavioral left behavioral health levy that is up for vote next month. By way of assumption. So this is the big one. So what we are describing is the mechanics of how this works, and we're not talking about any specific proposals. And this is important because we are working from this model. We are working from the assessed value forecast. That came from the Office of Economic and Revenue Forecast in November of last year. We have received notice from the Director of the Forecast Office that the upcoming forecast update on April tenth. Will actually reduce the assessed value forecast for next year and future years. So that has implication for the the rates that are shown and for the ultimate taxi capacity that the city has. So again, we 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 always update with the best available information. What we're using now is the best available information, but the. Information will change as of April tenth. Also, we, I believe, as Deputy Director Panucci emphasized. We are not modeling any specific proposals. We we do not have any proposals to model. We are just showing how this model works. With and but in order to kind of demonstrate the sensitivities of the different assumptions that are made. We've chosen three general scenarios to show you. One is a scenario that just adjusts all of the existing levies for inflation. On the date of renewal and then for for future years. So it kind of resets them all. To account for the impact of inflation over the term of the levy. The next tiered assumption is essentially a doubling or a hundred percent increase in the levy value for each one of the levies at their renewal date. And then the third kind of the highest level assumption is the two as a two hundred percent increase. Which would triple each of the levy. Again, this is just to show how how it works and how sensitive the model is. None none of these are specific proposals that we've received. So the amounts that are calculated through this process are shown here. Again, it's just for context that you can understand the current levy that we have in the first column. Are the current amount for each one of these levies amounts shown in millions. And then what what happens if you just say we're just going to grow it by inflation or double it or triple it. These are the amounts that would result. And it's just essentially applying this broad assumption to each of the levies across each scenario. So if we could go back. And the and it's not to say that that's the only way that the model can work. Different decisions can be made about each one of the individual levies as we progress through the discussion for. For not just the low income housing levy, but all future levies as if. If there's a modeling assumption that we should make about any one of the individual levels, we can use that specific. Proposal if the model doesn't limit us to buy kind of a cookie car, a peanut butter approach to everything. That's just what we did because we're just showing you broad examples. So now we can look at the next slide. So using this model, these are the sort of projections that are made. So the kind of starting point is that twenty twenty two amount, and this is for. Just the city tax burden. So these are only the city. The city levy, the general purpose levy and the lid lift. So about eighteen hundred dollars as a kind of a baseline starting point. And then you can see that if we just grow the levies using the inflation assumption assumption. By the end of twenty by twenty twenty nine, that that total tax bill for the median value home is about twenty five hundred dollars. For the doubling of the levy, it's a little shy of three thousand dollars annual tax bill. And then for the tripling of the levy, it grows to thirty seven hundred dollars by the last year. And then kind of to piggyback on a comment that Ed made earlier, this includes also growth in median. Home value as well. So it's not a fixed value. The median value is assumed to grow. By about five percent per year. So there's a combination of factors that leads to the the growth in the tech bill over the seven years that are shown here. It's the the assumptions about size of the levies, but also the growth in the median value that is. At the levy rates are assigned to. And so this is doing the exact same approach, except looking at all of the jurisdiction. So we what we have not done in this scenario is apply the same inflation doubling and tripling. Assumption to the other jurisdiction. We we relied on C B O, who is the original author of this model. There are assumptions that they made, which generally approximated the size of prior levy increases for those other jurisdictional levy. So so this one builds those kind of assumption that. The next levy renewal for those other jurisdictions will be very similar to the magnitude of the prior renewal. But it does, however, make different assumptions as described to the pity portion. Of each one of the of the tax bill to show that building from a starting point of sixty seven hundred dollars. For a median assessed value home in twenty twenty two, at the inflation scenario, it would grow to. Just shy of nine thousand dollars by twenty twenty nine in the inflation scenario. And then at the high end, it would be ten thousand five hundred dollars for the tripling scenario. So so again, these are just scenarios. Once we start receiving different proposals for. Modeling levies in the upcoming discussion. We can we can input those and tweak assumptions to show various impacts for tax bill, not just. For the the left current levy under discussion, but also considering the the impact from other future levy discussions as well. And then I believe there is one. So this is not looking at the. The impact to the taxpayer, but this is looking at how much money each one of these scenarios would generate. So this is like the total total amount of levy revenue under the various scenarios. And the the top line of the graph is the max level. So this is essentially saying. That's the total taxing capacity for the jurisdictional of the city of Seattle. This is the three dollars and sixty cents per thousand that's value times the the forecast of the set value. For each one of those years. The next slide, the next line below it is the tripling scenario. So the two hundred percent growth plus the levy reserve. So what the levy reserve is, it's a stipulation in our city debt policy. That says twelve percent of the city's taxing capacity should be held in reserve for emergency. So it's not actually a tax rate that has been authorized. It's just a kind of reserve excess capacity that we that we hold to the side in case of an emergency. A very key takeaway here and one, you know. In discussions with with folks with a rich history at the city of Seattle is that. If you look at that top levy scenario, it touches the max capacity. By twenty twenty seven. So that means that the. But that scenario essentially hits, but then starts to decline away from our maximum taxing capacity in that year. It's which is in its own right, an interesting observation, but even more. Interesting, I guess, the word, when you take into context that we expect to see in a set value forecast that is decreasing. So so the total amount of assessed value, the growth is going to be lower in the April forecast than what we have to use this model. So it's probably a fairly safe assumption that after we update this graph. With the with the April numbers, the the green line will cross the black line indicating that. That that example scenario of tripling the levy plus levy reserve would be more than our taxing capacity could afford. So so as we get those numbers, we'll update these and see and see how that looks. But that's kind of the the most significant takeaway in this otherwise just examples of how the the model work. And that's that's essentially. The discussion scenarios, and I'll just turn it over to Ed to talk about some more of the characteristics of the actual twenty twenty two eleven.
Thank you, Tom. To wrap us up, I've just got three more slides that I'll go through real quickly. So the the next few slides will show us. How we're tracking compared to our neighboring King County cities in terms of residential property values. Property tax rates and median property tax bill. So we exclude the cities that have a population in these graphs. We exclude. The cities that have a population of under fifteen thousand people, as those were primarily outliers in the data. And so while looking at these, as I mentioned earlier, property tax bill is a product product of two factors. The assessed home value and the tax rate for the jurisdiction in which that home is. So this first slide shows the twenty twenty two median residential property values. For these twenty cities, and you'll see that Seattle ranks in the top half as the seventh highest at the. Seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar median home value figure. And the next slide compares the twenty twenty two property tax rates. Which shows Seattle is having the fifth lowest rate, which for twenty twenty two was eight dollars and eighty three cents. For one thousand assessed value and Seattle is relatively unique here because our entire city has the same tax rate. Compared to a lot of other cities having multiple rates within it due to overlapping taxing jurisdictions like. School districts, hospitals, fire districts, etc. And then the the next slide will bring it all together. And as you might have expected, if our median housing values are higher than average. And our rates are lower than average, the median property tax bill should be somewhere around the middle. And that's what this graph shows. Seattle's median property tax bill in twenty twenty two, as you signed up earlier charts was just was sixty seven hundred dollars and ten sixty seven. Sixty seven ten. So yeah, that wraps up our presentation, I believe. So if there are questions, we're open to that.
Yeah, thanks, Ed and Tom. So that was a lot of information in a short amount of time. Like I said, we're happy to do a deeper dive in office briefings and all. And happy to take a few questions now. I think we have just like three minutes left on the on the agenda. And just really wanted to highlight sort of get get us all grounded in how property taxes are. Calculated and as we enter into discussions over this year and next year with the housing levy and transportation levy and other things. We are happy to work with individual council members to think through different proposals and how it fits within the context of. The entire property tax bill and how that might impact and benefit homeowners and renters as well as businesses.
Hey, with that, are there any? First of all, thank you, guys. And I'm sorry, Ed, I was saying your name wrong. Thank you for putting this together in the overview. Are there any questions or comments that my colleagues would like to make? So. If we're done with this, we can move on into our agenda. Hey, I do not see any questions or any hands raised. All right. Okay, I guess we are done with you guys. Thank you very much for providing the charts and all the information. It's very helpful. All right. So let's see, moving on into our agenda, folks. Item number five, looks like we have a proclamation teed up today. Councilmember Herbold, I understand that you have a proclamation recognizing March twentieth. As the day of No Ruse for signature, and so I'm going to hand you. The floor.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Let me just. Change my screen here. Thanks for your patience. Really appreciate the opportunity to bring forward this proclamation. Commemorating Nowruz, which means new day and marks the vernal equinox in the northern hemisphere. And is the first day of the Persian New Year. Nowruz began today at two twenty four P M this afternoon. This holiday originated in ancient Persia more than three thousand years ago. It's celebrated by. Nearly three hundred million people of different faiths and cultures around the globe. From Western, Central and South Asia to the Caucasus, Black Sea Basin and the Balkans. This holiday is the embodiment of a centuries long tradition. Promoting values of peace and solidarity and symbolizing a time of renewal and community. Marking the departure from the trials of the previous year and bringing hope the new year. Really want to thank everybody working together on this celebratory proclamation. While recognizing that there are members of the Iranian community and Afghani community where these holidays are celebrated. Where community members are are very tied to their families back home, families who are dealing with. Persecution, disruption of their lives and really. I'm grateful for the opportunity to to lift up. What the significance of of this new year means for those communities. What the significance of of this new year means for those communities. Appreciate that the mayor is signing on to this proclamation in concurrence and also want to thank. Our governor for also having issued his own proclamation celebrating Nowruz. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Do any of my colleagues have any comments that they wish to make before we go to a vote? All right, not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to determine which council members would like to fix their signatures to Councilmember Herbold's proclamation?
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Musceta.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
I.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sawat.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Council President Juarez.
I.
Nine signatures will be affixed to the proclamation.
Thank you. And thank you again, Councilmember Herbold, for bringing this forward. So we will come to the point in our agenda where each of you will tell us what you did last week, this week, and maybe next week. So it looks like the roll call order. We will start with Councilmember Lewis, then Morales, Musceta, Councilmember Nelson, Peterson, Sawat, Strauss. And then Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Today, I'm just to kick it off with the most topical thing, was thrilled to visit Pike Place Market. For. Free daffodil day and the kicking off of the spring season. It was really great to see a long line. All the way down Pike Place onto First Avenue for people getting in line to get their. Limit of two free daffodils per person to celebrate this festive change of the weather. So strongly encourage community members to make their way to Pike Place Market to engage in this activity. And really was great to see the market doing very well today with a lot of visitors. And it was a good way to kick off the week. The Seattle Youth Employment Program applications are still open through the end of this week, so ending Friday, March twenty fourth. The Seattle Youth Employment Program supports young people aged sixteen to twenty four. To from qualifying income households and communities that experience racial, social and economic disparity. With a goal of increasing youth and young adult abilities to pursue careers that pay well and are meaningful to them. Participants receive stipends while gaining marketable skills and exposure to various career fields. And many are also placed in structured paid work settings within City of Seattle departments. As well as local nonprofit agencies to apply those skills and hands-on experience. So if you are interested in that program, get your application in by Friday, March twenty fourth. Seattle Public Library, the Central Library and all branches of the Seattle Public Library will be closed on Wednesday, March twenty second, two thousand twenty three. For a staff in-service day. The Central Library Book Drop will be closed, but all branch book drops are going to remain open. No library materials will be due on March twenty second, twenty twenty three, given. The staff in-service day. And all branch library park and garages are also going to be closed. One exception, the Central Library Garage is going to be open during regular operating hours. On Thursday, March twenty third of two thousand twenty three. The Seattle Public Library's short story dispensers, which provide on-demand printed short stories at two locations, just got an exciting update. They now feature a new collection of stories written exclusively by Seattle area authors. The dispensers are available for visitors at the Central Library at one thousand fourth Avenue. Or customers waiting in line for coffee at the Station Coffee House in Seattle's Beacon Hill neighborhood at sixteen hundred South. Roberto Meistis Festival Street. Finally, Reflections twenty twenty three. Reflections twenty twenty three returns once again to inspire and liven up Seattle artists and the community. Filmed on the elegant stage of Pier sixty two on Seattle's waterfront, Reflections Dance Festival twenty twenty three. Is another stunning love letter to the city of Seattle. The third chapter of this unique dance festival will be screened as the closing program. Of the City of Seattle's Race and Social Justice Summit during a special livestream program on Friday, this Friday, March twenty fourth. From six to seven thirty P M. Reflections debuted in the first year of the pandemic in twenty twenty to an audience of four thousand people. And Reflections twenty twenty three continues to feature contemporary dancers and cultural practitioners. Who care about culture and equity in the arts. Reflections is co-presented by the Seattle Public Library. And Friends of the Waterfront Seattle with lead partners Seattle Office of Arts and Culture and the Office of the Waterfront and Civic Projects. And wrapping up the library section, award-winning poet Claudia Castro Luna. Is going to be hosting a bilingual spring program series at the Seattle Public Library, exploring how we can keep creativity alive. The former Washington State poet laureate has guest curated this series, which kicks off with a program called Creativity Every Day slash. Creatividad. Cotidiana, which explores cultural practices around creativity. The first event will be held on Thursday, March thirtieth from seven P M to eight P M at the Central Library, Level Four, Room One. And Clean City update.
Councilmember, you went on mute. Somehow. If you can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you. You talk to me.
Sorry, Councilmember Lewis.
I briefly muted. My apologies. I don't know how that happened.
Okay.
Gosh.
I thought I was in trouble.
Yeah, but anyway, just to repeat the Clean City. Portion. The Clean City data for March sixth to March tenth, three hundred and one needles recovered. And thirty two thousand seven hundred and sixty pounds of garbage from a hundred and forty-three different park pickup locations. And with that, Madam President, I don't have anything else to add. So unless there are comments from colleagues. And I don't see any, I will pass it along to Councilmember Morales.
I'm coming, I'm coming. Find the button. Good afternoon, colleagues. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. As Council President mentioned, there is one item from the Neighborhood Education Arts and Culture Committee. On tomorrow's full council agenda, a resolution. Two zero eight eight that approves a development advisory committee for U Dub Medical Center Northwest Campus. Master Institution, Major Institution Master Plan. The next committee meeting is this Friday at nine thirty. We've got a pretty packed agenda. So colleagues, if you are a committee member and you are going to be there, please let me know as soon as possible. The agenda will include a vote on the Council Bill one two zero five two five. Creating an RSJI ordinance. We had some discussion last week and we'll be voting on that this week. We'll also be putting on the appointment of Derek Wheeler Smith as Director of the Office of Civil Rights. And we'll be joined, I'm very excited to say, by guests from Richmond, Virginia and from the city of Chicago. Discuss their work on community wealth building initiatives. As you know. The our Department of Neighborhoods has been conducting research for the last year. On the role that the city might play in facilitating and supporting different generational wealth building. Programs and pilots. So we've been talking with folks from other cities to see what they're doing and we'll be hearing from a couple of them this week. This morning, I met with Jennifer Chow, Mayor's Appointment for appointee for the Director Position. At the Department of Neighborhoods. I'm looking forward to working with her. I think it's going to be a great partnership. And I really do want to thank Sarah Morningstar, who's been serving in the interim capacity for the last many months and has done an excellent job of. Been the trains moving at D O N. This week I'll be meeting with the Domestic Workers Coalition to discuss their interest in creating a portable benefits package for. Landscapers, nannies, housecare workers, people who are domestic workers. And we've been talking for about a year now and they are pulling together a package. So I will get an update from them this week. As Councilmember Lewis mentioned, on Friday afternoon, there will be the twenty twenty three Race and Social Justice Initiative Summit. This year, the. Theme is on healing, belonging and unity. The meeting is going to be on Zoom and I'll be making some remarks at the beginning of the event. And look forward to celebrating the. Passage, at least out of committee, of the Race and Social Justice Ordinance. Past weekend, I attended the Othello Town Hall at New Holly. Participate in some community discussions around economic development and health and safety. And I have to say, there were several takeaways. I think we all hear these similar conversations across the city, but there's a clear desire from neighbors. For more opportunities for young people, particularly around job training opportunities, pre-apprenticeship programs that are connected, they're connecting to. Through school. Also heard a lot about the return of youth programs, especially, for example, late nineteen programs. And the need for more of that at our community centers. As well as a an interest in a return of funding for youth programs, especially for those that kind of dried up during the pandemic. Residents also spoke about their desire for communities that are designed to allow them to walk to the park with their kids. Walk to a grocery store and also an interest in much better street lighting throughout the neighborhood. So I want to thank the folks who were organizing that and thanks to the residents and the providers who came out to listen. To the concerns that neighbors had. I also attended the Columbia City Night Market, which was chock full of black and brown vendors selling jewelry. Art, body products, great food. This night market was started twenty twenty one, I believe, by Peace Peloton. Which is a group that came together to connect neighbors to these businesses and really help people, communities and businesses thrive. Also run a bike program, invites cyclists of all levels on rides throughout the city. And the point of those bike rides is also to connect, they ride, create paths through. Parts of the city that are have historical significance for the black community. And they end up along the way at black businesses. These routes offer education and the opportunity to to celebrate black achievement throughout the city. So the next night market is April fifteenth. You should come on down to Columbia City and celebrate with folks there. And then there will be a bike ride. The next bike ride is scheduled for May twentieth. Interested in doing that? You can be on an electric bike, I asked, and to be able to join. Here this week, I'll be a guest speaker at the Seattle Girl School for one of their community meetings. They like to have their young people talk with folks who are involved in local government and who shape our policies. So they've invited me to join them. Looking forward to that. And last thing for me, since next week's briefing is canceled, I do want to let folks know that. On March twenty ninth, I'll be hosting the next panel discussion of our Seattle Within Reach series. We'll be discussing the intersection of arts in the comprehensive plan. So I'm really looking forward to that discussion. We will have Cheko Phillips, who's a Program Director at Four Culture, Randy Engstrom from Third Wave Creative. And Eric Arguello, who is the Co-President of Calle Twenty Four. Might be Calle Veinticuatro, which is a Latino cultural district in the Mission in San Francisco. So I'm really looking forward to that discussion and to. Hearing more about how our arts sector. Really needs us to be paying attention to them as we're doing our comprehensive planning, because as I've said many times before. Our artists also need. Affordable production space, affordable rehearsal space and places to to. Practice their art and and perform for the community. So looking forward to that discussion. And that's all I have, colleagues. If I don't see any hands. So I will pass it to Councilmember Musceta.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Morales. And I want to come with you on one of these bike rides soon. That has been a goal of mine. So please let me know when folks are listening. All right, that sounds great. Maybe on a sunny, sunny day, though, you know.
Yeah, I'm not going with her, biker. I'll let you all know now I'm not going. We'll ride an extra mile in your honor. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Well, thank you, colleagues. We did have a fine, a special finance and housing committee meeting this morning. Where we had a good discussion. We voted on a handful of items. That includes the establishment of labor standard requirements for paid sick and safe leave. For app-based workers in Seattle. Very good discussion and really appreciate the vote out of committee. If you have any questions about the legislation and you'd like to talk about it more before next Tuesday's vote. Please do let me or my office, Sajal Parekh, know, along with Karina Bull, the. Mayor Partners and the Executive Team Partners, as well as Karam Levitas and from the Office of Labor Standards and Brianna Thomas. From the Mayor's Office. So it's a joint effort here and really excited to be able to pass these protections into statute. As we know. Sickness continues to plague us, whether or not it's a COVID or not. The other item that we voted out of committee this morning was the multifamily, multifamily M F T E. Multifamily tax exemption for housing properties. This is an extension of the program so that we have another year to. Really work on policy proposals and new changes and enhancements we'd like to see to the program that will take place in twenty twenty four. This is an allowance of the continued policy for the next year instead of having expired at the end of this year. Really wanted to get this out of our committee before we take on the housing levy and other items throughout the rest of the year. So thank you, colleagues, for your support for that legislation. We will seek to have a report back in our committee on the M F T E program review. Later this late summer or early fall, as you heard in my committee today. There's also a number of protections that we included in twenty nineteen legislation that will continue as a requirement for the extension that we authorized in committee this morning. The third item that we passed out of committee is the twenty twenty three Grant Acceptance Ordinance. This is our annual grant acceptance ordinance from. Other government and private entities who provide grants to the city that is outside of our normal budgeting process. We go through a process of reviewing those to make sure that we are fully aware and providing transparency to the public. And I want to thank councilmembers. Councilmembers Herbold and Peterson for their amendment today regarding one of the S P D related items. And the support for that amendment as well. That is, that was passed out of committee and up for vote next Tuesday. And then finally, we had a briefing on the Seattle Rescue Plan, the two thousand twenty-two year-end report. And we have a lot of appreciation for. Central staff and the C B O office who continue to track those expenses, making sure that any encumbered expenses are being reported. And that if there's funding sitting around, that we make sure that we're expediting the process to get it out. And the good news is, we are ahead of the pack across the nation with getting the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and other COVID-related expenses. Out the door and then very appreciative of the city's Budget Office. Response to the council's request to have those regular monthly meetings, monthly reports. Quarterly updates in our committee and year-end reports as well. We have asked for a summary page so that you too can sing the praises. Of the work that we've done through the Seattle Rescue Plans, plural, at least three or four of those in the last three years. And look forward to getting that summary document so we can really highlight the work that we've done in Seattle. Our next Finance and Housing Committee meeting is not scheduled until May seventeenth at nine thirty A M. We have decided to convert all of our finance and housing meetings that are regularly scheduled. Between the beginning of April and the end of June. To be the Select Housing Levy Committee. That is a committee of the whole. So if you have not already received a calendar hold. For those committee meetings, we will make sure that that does get on your agenda, but I believe that that has been reported out in the L A meetings. This is an opportunity for us for the three-month period between April fifth and June twenty seventh. To really dedicate all of what would have been our Finance and Housing Committee times to discussing the. Housing levy that is going to be on the November ballot this year, once the council approves it and sends it to the voters. So again, we will initiate the discussion on April fifth. We will have the legislation in front of us later in April. And really have an opportunity to have a robust discussion with community partners as well in May and June. That's really exciting. But we wanted to make sure to keep the May seventeen, nine thirty meeting on the books, because this will offer us an opportunity. To get an update from central staff on the recent Revenue Forecast Council Report. We also know the state legislature is in the midst of providing an update. On their revenue forecast, as you heard from the O I R team this morning. And it'll give us a better sense of how to incorporate feedback from CBO and central staff on other revenue streams that were not part of the revenue forecast report in the last two weeks here so that we can really have a robust picture of what revenue streams are changing and any adoptions that the council may need to make regarding twenty-three or twenty-four. So again, be on the lookout for the Select Housing Levy Committee meetings to be on your calendars between April, May, and June, and for the Finance and Housing Committee meeting to be on May seventeenth at nine thirty AM. In other updates, I may be joining other colleagues. I'm not quite sure who's all coming, but we're going to go to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. I will be taking off a little bit early for the board meeting, which is on Friday. I will also be having the opportunity to meet with congressional members there. I'll be highlighting our American Rescue Act plan investments and applauding them for the direct funding to the city. Again, this is relatively unique in the history of national funding directly to large cities like Seattle, and I want to showcase how successful that direct infusion of cash has been in Seattle. We'll also be lifting up some of the earmark requests for some of the spending policies or packages that are moving forward for the city of Seattle. And I'm really excited to discuss what our city has been working on collectively. So if you'll be at National League of Cities, either folks here or across the state, I'll look forward to seeing you all there. Finally, not finally, second to last, I have an update that I wanted to share with all. If you did not see that our very own Joseph Pihah from the communications staff from Seattle City Council's Communication Department, he has won the Blue Pencil and Golden Screen Award from the National Association of Government Communicators. This was a specific award for his work that he did on the budget transparency efforts, the social media efforts, the specific website, the interactive tools that he created. All of you applauded his work over the last three years. As we've been budget chair, we've been really trying to provide greater transparency here, and it would not have been possible without Joseph Pihah's concept of how to communicate this out to the general public and really make it an interactive tool, not just for the public, but for us too, so that we could quickly scroll through and see who was a proposing amendments and what the final product looked like. We have helped to deconstruct what the process is for the city's budget, and the award to Joseph Pihah from the National Association of Government Communicators is very well deserved. This is specific to the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget process. And again, congratulations to him. Thank you for your work, Joseph, to help make this complex, somewhat bureaucratic process more accessible and digestible, and congrats on your Blue Pencil and Gold Screen Award. Okay, I have one more announcement. Colleagues, with, with our passage of the sick leave legislation this morning, not only is this historic in terms of the protections that it offers for workers themselves, for the broader public health and the public good, investments in our community health and also in our local economy, a great reason to celebrate alone, but another great reason that it's an opportunity for us to collectively celebrate is that this was Sajal Parekh's last piece of worker protection legislation. Now going into near six years of work in our office, Sajal Parekh, serving as Chief of Staff, has led on labor relations, budget procedures, revenue reform, and a number of other issues. And we are very excited for her as she thinks about what is next for her after city council. And it has been an honor of mine to have her as Chief of Staff in my office. I told her that every minute that she worked for in our office has been a gift, so I thank her for all of her work, her tenacity in getting policy through, her commitment to collaboration, and her doggedness when it comes to stakeholdering. You will never second guess that a policy has been stakeholdered in our, in our office because of Sajal's commitment to that on all of the items that she touches. So we will have a proclamation, probably no surprise to Sajal. We want to highlight all of her work, and we will send that around to all of you to be able to sign on to, if you would like, throughout the course of next week. And then we will have an opportunity, it sounds like, maybe to sign on to that on the April third day, which is fantastic because our hope was to have Sajal Parekh Day recognized on April sixth. That will be her last day in the office, and we will make sure to send out to the floor and the executive and our community partners as well a chance to celebrate her on April sixth. Thanks so much for all the work that you've done, Sajal, and we'll send the information around to all of you as well about the proclamation and the celebration that we anticipate coming up that first week of April. Thank you very much, colleagues. Seeing no questions, I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Nelson.
All right. Hello, everybody. Happy Spring. The Economic Development, Technology, and City Light Committee will meet on Wednesday, and there are two items on the agenda. The first will be another Small Business Roundtable, this time with a panel of small housing providers, which is a segment of the small business community that my 2022 and 2023 work plans identify for attention and support. So for context, last year on February ninth, the committee hosted a panel of neighborhood small business owners and representatives to talk about crime and its impacts on their workers and customers and livelihoods. And, and they, and that conversation surfaced several recommendations, two of which were implemented, which were case conferencing and the storefront repair fund. So anyway, small housing providers occupy a really crucial niche of our housing ecosystem because they supply a substantial portion of Seattle's below-market rate housing options, including most of the multi-bedroom rentals that, that families and students can afford. And retaining that housing stock is key to our housing and anti-displacement goals. And so this will be an opportunity to hear directly from providers about some of the challenges that they face staying in business in our city. And they'll also present the, this particular sector of our housing market and, and just talk about ways that the city can, can, can support them going forward. The second item on our agenda is a briefing discussion and possible vote on Council Bill 120532, which would authorize City Light to join the Western Resource Adequacy Program, or RAP. RAP is a new voluntary resource adequacy planning and compliance program in the Western United States, which unites multiple participating utilities. The purpose of the program is to make sure we have enough resources to provide electric service under a range of conditions or scenarios with a sufficient degree of reliability and stability. And City Light briefed the committee about this program on January eleventh at our meeting, and they did that in anticipation of this legislation, once federal approval of the terms of this program had been received, and that happened last month. City Light and Eric McConaughey of Central Staff circulated memos explaining the, the details of the program and the legislation to committee members. And so if you would like more information, you can reach out to Eric for that, and people that are not on the committee, you're welcome to this information as well, so just ask. All right, meetings I took last week. Let's see, on March fourteenth, my staff and I attended Downtown Seattle Association's twenty, twenty-two-three State of Downtown, and DSA President John Scholes provided the State of Downtown address, and a couple data points from Downtown's report card caught my attention. A record high of one hundred and four thousand residents now call downtown home. More than three hundred and forty thousand jobs are located downtown, which is fifty-five percent of Seattle's total jobs. And office worker foot traffic reached forty-seven percent, up fifteen percent at the height of the pandemic. So I don't know what grade Seattle would get on that last point, but it's, it's below average. And so John issued basically a, a call to action for city leaders to, to step up the, to the plate and accelerate efforts on downtown revitalization. And he identified four priority areas, which can be boiled down to make streets safer, take the lead on bringing workers back to the office, incentivize new businesses to locate downtown because if San Francisco can do it, why can't we? And then finally, cut permitting red tape. And, you know, you've heard me talk about some of these priorities for the past year or so, so I support them a hundred percent. And while we're waiting for the mayor to develop the downtown activation plan, we can get to work, you know, interdepartmentally on, on these goals because we can do them right now. So I support taking to heart these recommendations. And I will note that both John Scholes and the keynote speaker, Ed Glaser, ended on a high note, which was that, and they went through periods of Seattle's history and noted that we've gone through a lot of challenges in the past, the fire and building the Space Needle in record time, et cetera. So we can do it if we focus in, in all work together. That was a takeaway of the, of the event as well. Okay, in addition, last week, my, my Chief of Staff Jeremy Moon attended a panel discussion with local arts and cultural leaders hosted by Inspire Washington and Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal. And in his report back to the office, he, he noted that Ellen Walker, who's Executive Director for the Pacific Northwest LA, posed a really important question to the Congresswoman on how to advance the narrative in our advocacy of, of arts and culture that it's not just nice to have arts and culture, it's that these organizations are economic drivers in our city. And so it's how do we, how do we advance that narrative? And also, it dovetails, of course, with downtown revitalization, as many of these organizations are located downtown. And Congresswoman Jayapal agreed, and she said, "We need to reframe the conversation around arts and culture, both as an economic driver, but also as something transformative." And she recalled that during the pandemic, arts and culture organizations got really creative, creative with the ways in which people could interact with, with art and culture and the organizations from home, and allowed us to feel a range of emotions during what was a really difficult time. And I have to say, I couldn't agree more. And NAMM was represented on the panel as well, and I've been working to secure federal funding for, for better organizations so that they can continue after the pandemic in, in strength. And I look forward to adding my voice to the reframing of this conversation. And then finally, meetings I have this week. I, on Wednesday, I'll be attending the Fred Hutch Ribbon Cutting Event, celebrating the opening of the new South Lake Union Clinic. And I also wrote a, I, I wrote, I think it's due this week. I couldn't, I'm, I'm a little bit unsure of that. I wrote a letter in support for federal appropriation funding for community roots housing. And if funded, this will help ensure that these properties remain affordable for the long haul and that the residents can continue to live in safe, affordable housing. And that is it for me. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I will hand the mic to Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Good afternoon, colleagues. There are no items from the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee on the full council agenda tomorrow afternoon. Our next meeting of the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee will be tomorrow, Tuesday, March twenty-first at nine thirty AM. We have three items on our committee agenda. We will have a briefing and discussion on our city, with our city auditor and ESTA to update us on progress ESTA has made implementing the ten recommendations from the September 2020 audit of Seattle-owned bridges. As you may recall, we ordered this audit of city-owned bridges after the sudden cracking enclosure of the West Seattle Bridge in early 2020. The city audit found several bridges in poor or suboptimal physical condition. One of the key findings is that repair and maintenance of our bridges has been historically underfunded. Other themes of the audit included the need to improve overall asset management techniques and procedures. In 2015, the move Seattle property tax levy promised investments in bridges, and during the past two years, the council has taken the initiative on multiple occasions to increase funding for bridges. So many thanks to the Seattle residents who written to the committee about the need to do more for bridges that connect our communities, support all modes of transportation, and enable our economic recovery. We'll also have an audit briefing from ESTA to discuss their reaction to the recently completed federal audit that mentioned several ESTA projects. As you may recall, the Seattle Times posted an article last month describing parts of that federal government forty-six-page audit. That audit was conducted by the Inspector General at the US Department of Transportation, and its recommendations were directed at various administrators within that federal department. But the report has potential funding implications for Seattle. I've asked our city auditor David G. Jones to join ESTA at the committee table in case they can lend additional expertise regarding this federal audit report. And I also spoke to the US Inspector General's office. After the report was published, they confirmed that the US DOT must resolve these concerns by December thirty-first of this year. And finally, our Transportation Committee will have a briefing and discussion from City Council Central Staff on transportation projects that could be built if we move ahead with a funding source that is used in seventy other Washington State cities and across the nation. These are, of course, transportation impact fees. In addition to an overview reminder of what impact fees are, how they work elsewhere, we'll highlight the many multimodal transportation projects throughout the city that would be eligible for such funding. This is merely following through on a commitment the council made and, and repeated nearly every year since 2017 to keep this funding option viable. For more information, you can go to the council's website, seattle.gov/forward slash council/issues/impact-fee. Last week, I attended the King County Regional Transit Committee. We received an update from the new general manager of King County Metro, Michelle Allison. The sobering news is that bus ridership is still down roughly fifty percent from its peak in 2019. But the good news is that it has increased year-to-date this year as compared to the same period last year. I continue to serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee, which is part of my work with Seattle Public Utilities. Last week, we learned the good news that King County Waste Water Treatment Division adjusted their capital budget assumptions so they could maintain their promised rate for 2024. Now, this is important for our Seattle constituents because roughly one-third of our bills from Seattle Public Utilities are actually passed through to us by King County for wastewater treatment. So when King County sticks to its rate promises, that enables Seattle Public Utilities and the city council to stick to our rate path promises. That concludes my report. Any questions before we go to Councilmember Swar? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Good afternoon, everyone. There are no items on tomorrow's city council agenda from the Sustainability and Renters' Rights Committee. The committee met last Friday, March seventeenth, and discussed the legislation from my office to cap late fees for renters at, you know, for late rent payment for renters at ten dollars a month. It was an extensive discussion with over thirty people speaking in public comment. Overwhelmingly, renters urging the council to regulate rent fees to ten dollars a month and to ban notice fees. We also had a few landlords predictably speaking in opposition to the late fee cap, but what's notable is that there were small landlords who testified in strong support of the late fee cap. A panel of renters and representatives from the Tenants Union of Washington, B. Seattle, and the Housing Justice Project were present at the committee table, and they answered questions and provided examples of truly outrageous late fees. There are currently no limits to the fees Seattle landlords can charge renters for overdue rent, as I have reported in previous briefing sessions. Some renters have told us that they are charged upwards of two hundred and fifty dollars as soon as rent is overdue, and many leases have clauses where landlords can charge an additional forty or fifty dollars every day the rent is late. Other renters have even faced late fees and then late fee notice delivery fees, which, as I've explained, is an additional fee for the privilege of getting a late fee. You know, getting the piece of paper that tells you you have to pay late fees. For working-class renters, this is a punch in the gut for being a few days late on rent, and for people who are temporarily unable to pay rent, late fees can spiral out of control. I encourage especially committee members, but all councilmembers who have questions about this legislation, who were not at the committee, to watch the video of Friday's committee meeting because we had many councilmember questions about what the problems are with the current late fee regime that the city has, that many renters are forced to stomach. Why a cap at ten dollars a month, as passed by the cities of Auburn and Burien, is the most progressive policy measure? And what accumulating rent fee, late fees, or it can do to a renter's credit score? And most crucially, the role that late fees can play in leading to possible eviction as they, you know, as, as they keep accumulating. And we also talked about why this, why the question of late fees is unrelated to the landlord, being, landlords being able to pay their mortgage payment. And in fact, we are getting, gathering together more data, you know, based on the questions that came in, in the committee to really understand and, and, I mean, my office knows it, but to share with other councilmembers and also members of the public about why actually late fees do not incentivize, you know, as landlords claim, but a false, false claim that they do not incentivize payment. And in fact, the statistics showing- And in fact, the statistics showing that that the overwhelming reason for late payment of rent is when people, when renters are in financial distress. And so it is very much connected to low income people. And in fact, now increasingly even middle class people, people with better salaries, living paycheck to paycheck, and then having one unexpected financial hit to their, you know, their months, monthly cash can put them behind on rent. So given all this, uh, we had a very good discussion about all of this. We intend to bring the bill for a vote at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the committee, which was on, which it will be, sorry, on April seventh. And um, last Friday's committee also voted out a committee uh, appointment to the Seattle Ventures Commission, which I expect will be on next week's City Council Agenda. That's it from me. Are there any questions or comments? I don't see any, so I will pass it on to Councilmember Strauss.
Councilmember Strauss, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Apologies for that. I was turning off my TV because it's reflecting on the picture behind me. So you all didn't have to see everyone's face in perpetu in the ether. Uh, thank you, uh, Council President, colleagues. Um, just want to share, I was able to attend an event last Friday at the Nordic Museum with Jonesy, the lead singer from Sigur Ros. He's got an amazing uh, multidisciplinary, multi-sensory uh, art exhibit up at the Nordic Museum in Ballard. It's going on right now. Strongly suggest folks attend. He mentioned that he was staying at a hotel on Ballard Avenue, and Jonesy said, quote, Ballard Avenue is poppin'. Um, I asked him if I could quote him on that. He said yes. So there we have it, folks. Uh, internationally acclaimed artist, thinking highly of Ballard. Uh, I was also able to join uh, other elected officials on Sunday for the Ninety-Fifth Annual Blessing of the Fleet of the North Pacific Fishing Fleet that is based out of Salmon Bay. Um, something, folks, is you're driving, if you like me, enjoy going to Ballard. If you are on the Ballard Bridge and you look over to Fisherman's Terminal and you see each fishing vessel, understand that each of those vessels is is a small business, uh, directly employing four to ten people. The bigger vessels, even more than that. And together, they are directly employing hundreds of people uh, and indirectly thousands. And so just as you might go to Ballard Avenue that Jonesy says is poppin' uh, and you see those brick and mortar storefronts, also understand that when you're looking at Fisherman's Terminal, that's a uh, those are, it's a different type of brick and mortar, and we depend on those small businesses uh, to make our port nationally and internationally known. Onto our regular scheduled land use committee, there are no items from the land use committee on tomorrow's full council agenda. Uh, we do have on the introduction referral calendar, the tree ordinance. It is on this week's uh, introduction referral calendar instead of last week because there were technical cleanup changes that did need to occur. Uh, so if folks, I I did brief the Urban Forestry Commission on this. So if you do see some differences, they are technical in nature. Uh, and any policy items that were changed, we're gonna bring up in in committee. Colleagues, uh, I am, I'm, I I don't know how many times I've asked, but I'm asking again. I'm searching for times on the calendar in the in this next month uh, to host a special land use committee meetings. If you think you may be canceling a committee meeting or are able to combine your meetings, please do let me know because we're having a difficult time finding times on the committee calendar. The next regularly scheduled land use committee is this Wednesday, March twenty second. Uh, let me just quickly pull up the my calendar here. Uh, we do plan to have a special land use committee meeting uh, next Wednesday, the twenty ninth. The following week on either Friday, the seventh or Monday, the third. Uh, we are then also looking at the week of uh, April seventeenth. Um, we are, we've not landed on a time, but it could be Monday, the seventeenth. If there is availability on either Thursday, the twentieth, or Friday, the twenty first, we would greatly appreciate it uh, to get this tree ordinance in good working condition before Earth Day on April twenty second. Uh, back to the regularly scheduled program, we um, have a full agenda this week for our uh, March twenty second meeting. I am anticipating this meeting may go over the two hour scheduled time, so please do be aware that uh, we may be going on past four PM. The EDI appointments I mentioned last week will not be coming to this land use committee meeting. After all, we didn't receive the information in time, so we will schedule that at a different time. The agenda for this week currently has three items, two of which are briefings only. The first is an item that may be voted on, which is a contract rezone clerk file three one four four seven zero. This is a standard con-contract rezone application that has gone through the hearing examiner's process for us as the land use committee and City Council to consider. This clerk file is quasi judicial and members should avoid ex parte communication. If you have had ex parte communication, please contact Kittle today or tomorrow. The typical flow for land use committee meetings is to have two meetings on an agenda item. And colleagues, if you are comfortable with voting on this clerk file on Wednesday, it will free up time in committee later this month as this month's committee is already overflowing, uh, which I just mentioned. So before the clerk file can be voted on at full council, the property owner and development agreement will need to be executed. Uh, we will have the ability to vote it out of committee, colleagues, if you are comfortable, and then hold it for the full council meeting until that uh, property owner and development agreement is executed. Second on this Wednesday's agenda is the Tree Canopy Report. OSCE released the twenty twenty-one Tree Canopy Assessment Report two weeks ago. Uh, this is a briefing only, and it will set the stage for the larger tree protection bill that is being heard uh, directly after. Uh, which brings me to the third agenda item, which is the tree protections. SDCI and Central Staff will be on hand to brief the entirety of the bill. We will be getting into the details, and this is intended to be the initial briefing at maybe a little bit of a higher level because in subsequent meetings, we will dig deeper section by section. So please do use this as an opportunity to understand the bill as a whole and where you will want to dig in deeper so that we can prep SDCI and Central Staff for when they return. Uh, we will issue the overall tree schedule this week, once we nail down some of those outer um, the week of April seventeenth meetings. Uh, and we would have liked to have that out for you today, but we've been held up with the delay in introduction as well as difficulty finding time uh, in council chambers to schedule this special committee uh, for all agenda items for this week's presentations. The agenda has been updated. Uh, Legisard has all the the materials and the presentations are available, so please do review the materials in advance as we have a full agenda. With that, Council President, colleagues, that is our committee report. Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, I will pass it to Councilmember Herbl.
Oh dear. Hello, let me see if I can get myself off. There we go. Greetings. Uh, thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. So there are no items on the full council agenda tomorrow from the Public Safety and Human Services Committee. And the Public Safety and Human Services Committee does not meet this week. The next meeting will be next Tuesday, March twenty eighth at nine thirty AM. Uh, for uh, just a short update on the public safety front, uh, the Seattle Police Department has recently submitted to council uh, responses to two statements of legislative intent. One is a statement of legislative intent uh, requesting a report on SPD backgrounding services. Um, this is just what it what it implies, the services that SPD uses to do background checks on applicants. The second is a statement of legislative intent report on SPD's uh, use of hiring incentives through the end of February. My correction, this is not a statement of legislative intent report. This is a report required by Ordinance twelve oh three eighty-nine, which is the hiring incentives legislation. Uh, between twenty thirteen and twenty thirteen, I'm sorry, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, SPD hired forty-two new recruits in one lateral hire. Thirty-eight of these new recruits have received their first payment. Uh, and four have, four of those recruits have their first payment pending. Uh, my quick review without any central staff confirmation, so please don't hold me to it, is that these numbers align pretty closely with SPD goals of forty-two new hires in one lateral hire for the month's July twenty-two, twenty twenty-two through the end of February twenty twenty-three. We'll hear more in the Public Safety and Human Services Committee uh, next week on all of these issues, uh, not just on recruitment, um, as it relates to specifically to hires, um, but also a lot of the system and process improvements. Uh, their digital backgrounding system, their uh, addressing the number of entry and lateral exam administrations. Uh, the work to address the need for additional locations for physical agility tests. Um, a whole slew of things uh, related to systems and process improvements. Um, reporting out on their marketing and outreach efforts, including their temporary adv- advertising plan, as well as their long-term advert-advertising plan. Uh, their dashboard that is being used to track internal metrics on candidate process processing, and um, a survey of new recruits and hires to understand why um, they were drawn to uh, apply to the Seattle Police Department. Uh, we'll also, as mentioned, be hearing about retention efforts within the department, including um, an update um, on something that we've talked to briefly. Uh, the shift structure change, one of the uh, most highly rated goals by police officers in a twenty nineteen retention study. Um, the interest in changing the shift structure um, for for um, wellness attributes associated with working uh, four days a week um, a-as opposed to the the current um, shift structure. Also want to mention um, that the Executive Council Joint Nine One One uh, Alternatives Pilot Work Group met last week. I want to thank Senior Deputy Mayor Harold for being with us and confirming that the executive is still on track for a pilot launch this fall. And confirmation as well um, that the call types that the council and mayor have been discussing, person down in wellness checks, which average about seven thousand calls a year, that these are still the call types that this pilot will focus on with a dual dispatch assistance. I also want to um, acknowledge that with the new Community Safety and Communications Center Director, um, Acting Director Gonzalez, with her on board and a Deputy Director higher imminent, I'm very optimistic that many of the other needed elements will begin to fall into place. So um, being a person who has expressed um, some some frustration um, about the development of this this pilot, I I wanted to take this time and space um, to express my optimism based on uh, last week's work. Updates in the area of the Human Services Department. Uh, last Friday, I had my monthly meeting with Human Services Direct- Interim Director Tanya Kim. One of the topics we discussed was her nomination to fill the permanent uh, director position. And last Wednesday, my office circulated to Public Safety and Human Services Committee members proposed questions for interim Director Kim. I welcome feedback and additions, and please send those by the end of day Wednesday this week. Uh, on at Tuesday's meeting of uh, the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, we were joined by representatives of a University of Washington-led team of national and international scholars presenting the results and recommendations of their in-depth research into the pay penalty experienced by anyone working in human services locally. Their report, you can find at socialwork.edu dot u-dub dot edu forward slash wage equity study. This report found that nonprofit human services workers are paid thirty-seven percent less than comparable workers in other sectors. Fixing a thirty-seven percent pay penalty is not going to be easy, but the city and all of the other public and private funding partners must take immediate steps to increase wages for these essential workers. Want to also uplift um, a grim milestone that King County reported on recently in quarter one of this year, two hundred and eighty-one King County residents died of drug or alcohol poisoning. This exceeds the total number of overdose deaths in all of twenty twelve, all in one quarter of twenty twenty-three. It also puts us on track sadly to exceed last year's record one thousand two overdose deaths by more than a ten percent increase if deaths continue at the current rate. This is largely driven by a dramatic increase in fentanyl and methamphetamine involved overdose deaths. I understand the Board of Health will be receiving a briefing on this work at the April meeting. While addressing this crisis is primarily a responsibility of the county, we know that this crisis impacts city residents, and the city has stepped forward to provide additional funding to help folks struggling with substance use disorder order. Meanwhile, I really think it's important that we note this painful moment as we know every death and overdose means precious lives lost in pain and grief for their loved ones. On the regional committee front, uh, last week at the Board of Health, we received a briefing on a planned nine-month strategic planning process. Uh, Director Khan noted that the public health worst workforce is exhausted after three years of pandemic response and federal funding cuts that are anticipated, that will require a clear uh, understanding of our priorities. The city's interlocal agreement with public health was last updated in twenty eleven, and there has been significant evolution in our partnership since that time. So I flagged my interest in considering an update to the interlocal agreement as part of the strategic planning work. Also want to note that we heard a lot of public comment at the Board of Health from medic medically fragile in and immunocompromised members of the public with significant concerns about the state's announcement that as of April third, masks will no longer be required in medical facilities. Public health has no authority to require masking without a declared public health emergency. Public health officers are discussing um, the concern that we heard. But meanwhile, masking remains required in medical facilities for the time being. And I really encourage everyone to mask up to prevent neighbors, uh, to protect neighbors when conditions warrant. Uh, up- upcoming regional committee meetings include uh, this week's King County Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee meeting on Thursday morning. And then other other meetings, I wanted to flag last week, I mentioned that I was going to be meeting with Inspector General Judge, um, the CPC and uh, Fire Chief Skoggins. In my meeting with Inspector General Judge, we discussed the status of the development of the new SPD ruse policy. I should say they're stalled status. Uh, we discussed the Inspector General mid-year report to the City Council and the OIG role in the future of the consent decree. In my meeting with the CPC, we discussed appointments to the commission, the future of the consent decree, and the long-delayed less lethal weapons policies from the Seattle Police Department. And in my meeting with Fire Chief Skoggins, we discussed the potential for expansion of Health One to a fourth and fifth unit. I attended the Be Loud Breakfast benefiting King County Sexual Assault Resource Center and celebrating four decades of leadership by departing CEO Mary Ellen Stone. This week, I have mu-monthly meetings with the OPA Director Betts and Public Health Director Khan. And I will be participating with Seattle Public Utilities CEO Lee to visit the site of the Longfellow Creek Drainage Project in District One. And I will hear and see the concerns from neighbors there impacted by the project. That's all I've got. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will pass it on to Madam President Juarez. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbl. I will be brief. Um, there are no items from the Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee on tomorrow's council agenda. The next committee meeting will be April twentieth. Uh, I'd like to begin by highlighting news from Climate Pledge Arena of our local Native American artists, multimedia artist and curator Matika Wilbur, who is also a friend, who is Swindomishin Tulalip, is the first ever artist in residence at the new arena. Matika and illustrator Sean Peterson, who is from the Pialp Tribe, also a good friend and artist, completed an exposition called The Salmon People, featured this winter onsite at Climate Pledge Arena. The exhibit was featured as part of the first residence, a first-of-its-kind residency program for Native American artists. Congratulations to both Matika and Sean. The new program was funded by the Climate Pledge Arena, the Seattle Kraken, and Smartsheet. We look forward to seeing many more indigenous folks being presented not only at Climate Pledge, but also with Seattle Rain. And of course, sorry about, I forgot. Seattle Storm. Sorry about that. I forgot for a minute. All right. So last week, we met with multiple constituency groups regarding the West Seattle Ballard Link Light Rail Extension. We met with the Regional Homeless Authority regarding encampment citywide and in District Five. And we met with city staff Elliot and Sarah regarding the West Seattle Ballard Link Light Rail Extension. As you know, that's been in the news a lot. We have a vote coming up and Sound Transit coming up on March twenty third. So we will also meet with the Human Services Division, which we do once a week regarding encampments specifically in District Five and R Vs. On Wednesday, we will meet with the Sound Transit North King County Subarea, which I'm a part of, and this will be in preparation for our vote on Thursday, March twenty third. Before we conclude, another reminder that Monday, March twenty seventh, council briefing will not be held. And the next city council meeting briefing will be Monday, April twen- April third. All right, that concludes my portion. Are there any questions? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you all for your patience, and we are adjourned.